Call the meeting to order. Please stand and apply.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
At this time, I would like to call on Pete Walrod to sing "America Beautiful."
Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountain majesties above the fruited plain. God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for patriot dreams as seas beyond the years. Thine alabasters, cities gleam, undimmed by human tears. God mend thine every flaw, confirm thy soul in self-control, thy liberty in law.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call on Madison County Clerk Mike Kevell to administer the oath of office to all of our supervisors, starting with our new supervisors.
We're gonna start with the newly-elected supervisors. If I can have Nelson's first. If I can have Jim Cunningham come up. Jim, if you have any family here with you that you'd like to have come up with you, they're welcome to join you as well. Left hand here, right hand in the air. I, James Cunningham, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Town Supervisor Nelson, Madison County Supervisor, to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations, Jim. Next, we're gonna have Tom Stokes come up. If you have any family here with you that you'd like to have join you, they're welcome to join you. Left hand here, right hand in the air. I, Thomas J. Stokes, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Town Supervisor Madison County Supervisor, to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations, Tom. Next, we're gonna have Mr. Ostrander come up. Do you have any family that you'd like to have come up? They're welcome to join you. Put your left hand on, right hand in the air. I, Joseph P. Ostrander, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Oneida Supervisor to the Madison County Board Supervisors, and that I will, according to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations. Last, we have Matt Roberts, also from the city of Oneida. Do you have family with you that'd like to join us? So, why don't you come up?
I'm Matthew A. Roberts.
I'm Matthew A. Roberts.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Oneida Supervisor to the Madison County Board Supervisors to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And now, we're going to have all of the re-elected supervisors stand at your seats. You're not one of them, Rocky. I'm gonna pass.
You're four years.
You're good. The rest of the supervisors, raise your right hand. When I say, state your name, I'm not even gonna say it. I'm just gonna say, "I", and then if you would say your name afterwards, that would be great. I, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Madison County Supervisor to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations, everyone. Your oath card is at your desk. If you would sign that where it says, "Signed Officer", that's you to the right, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll be right back. I just had to pass it off to the new guys.
I'll do roll call it this time. Corbin Zuchan is absent. DeGeer, Moses Jones, Walrod Schwartz, Goldstein, Deveronica Norelli, Bono Cunningham, Stokes, Sapansky Becker, Kavanaugh, Robert Magliocca, and Ostrander. There's 1,353 votes present. At this time, I need a motion to open the floor for nominations for the Chairman of the Board for the next two-year term, 2020 through 2021.
Let's move.
Pete. And I need a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. The floor is now open, and open for any nominations. Dan.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As you know, my time being part of this body is coming to a close. It is a distinct privilege and honor to be here today at my final meeting as supervisor to be able to nominate a member of our board to serve as Chair and Leader for the next two years. For eight of my 12 years serving on the Board of Supervisors, I've been fortunate enough to have been selected to serve as Vice Chairman, which has provided me with some insight that I will share with you regarding the Chair. I can attest that Chair of this body is not an easy position. It can be quite lonely sometimes. It comes with a lot of stress, many sleepless nights as decisions are contemplated and agonized over. The Chair must place the county's best interests over his or her political interests. You see, people pay attention to the Chair's words and actions, including governors and U.S. Senators, as we have witnessed in recent years. Now, Madison County has had great supervisors serve as its Chair throughout the county's distinguished history. Chairman Burrows Marshall and Alex Holmes from Eaton, Chairman Dennison Rogers from Hamilton, Chairman Rocco D. Veronica of Lennox are among this elite group of public servants. They have all left their mark upon our county through many great accomplishments. Over the past 12 years, I've witnessed our county achieve many more great accomplishments. The decades-old dispute with the Oneida Indian Nation has been settled. Working through this historic settlement was difficult at best. However, both Madison County and our neighbors at the O.I. are in a better position because of the settlement, and our relationship with one another has ever been stronger. The county's emergency communication system and emergency preparedness program both underwent significant changes, and our county is better prepared and stronger because of it. Our courthouse underwent a badly needed renovation. Our county's residents, all of our county's residents, including those with physical limitations, are now better served because of this renovation. Many of our county's schools now have special patrol officers in place to provide needed protection to our most valuable asset, our children. Again, our county is better prepared and stronger because of it. Madison County developed and implemented a success plan. This plan identifies what makes for a successful year in our county government and implements strategies for improvement. The plan also actively seeks feedback from our residents as to their satisfaction. Now, how many other county government elected officials would have the courage to ask for and then publish this type of public feedback? This is a prime example of putting the needs of the county above individual political interests. Madison County is better and stronger because of this effort. You can see a pattern here. The Madison County Board of Supervisors has made big decisions that strengthened our county over the past 12 years. Costs were weighed against the outcome, and our county is stronger and better because of these decisions. The results have been noticed by others as well, with Madison County being considered as one of the best value-for-your-tax-dollar county in New York State by NewYorkUp.com. Our internal polling also backs up the board's efforts with 98.7% of our residents responding that they believe Madison County provides an excellent value for their tax dollar. This board may not always agree on every decision. Quite frankly, it shouldn't always agree. This is, after all, a political body. Disagreements are inherent, as it's the nature of our business. Debate is healthy and important and sound decisions are formed. The best and most effective decisions, however, are always formed as a result of placing the county's best interests first. I am proud of what we have documented during my time on this board and encourage you all to strive to continue the efforts to make Madison County even better. Thanks to the groundwork laid by former Chairman Deveronica at both the New York State Association of Counties and the National Association of Counties, I've had the opportunity to work with county leaders from all over our state and nation. I have learned from this experience that there are good and effective county governments, but there are also counties that are less effective. Madison County is well-managed and an effective county government, and I would gladly compare our record of success against any other county. We have the best employees working hard each and every day to move our county forward. We have the best department heads and county administrators providing direction, and I'm not just saying this because Mark could be my boss in a couple days. And we have the best legislative body making public policy decisions. The effective and positive results do not happen without strong leadership, and to that end, I am honored to nominate a member of this body to be Chair for the next two years. When I began 12 years ago, I never dreamed I would develop such a great working relationship with this supervisor, and I am proud of the close bond and deep friendship that we have formed. I know that this supervisor always listens to all perspectives and makes decisions that place the best interests of Madison County first. He is a proven leader, and the results of his governance are undeniable. It is my pleasure to nominate my friend, the Supervisor from the town of Sullivan, John M. Becker, for Chair of this body, making him the third-longest Chair on our county's awesome history. Madison County is without doubt stronger and better positioned due to John's leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I would like to get a second to Dan Supervisor Norelli. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Chairman of the Board? If there are none, I need a motion to close the floor for nominations. Moses, seconded by Schwartz. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Okay. All in favor of John Becker for Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. John?
Mr. Chairman, if you have any family that you'd like to have come up?
Okay, I didn't think about that. You're gonna hold the Bible. Hold on, first. This Bible, all of the living chairs, except for Bob Kuiper, who passed away a couple years ago, signed this book. Rocky signed it. Larry Carpenter signed it. I have not signed it. Bob signed it. This goes all the way back. It was in my drawer when I got here. Rocky was in there when you were here. 1877, so... Right hand, left hand?
Right hand.
On the Bible. You threw me for a loop.
I, John M. Becker, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties
of the office
of the office
Chairman of the Board of Supervisors
Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of Madison County
to the best of my abilities, so help me God
to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you. Oh, we'll cancel the State of the State 'cause Dan said everything, so we'll be fine there. Welcome, residents, department heads, employees, and colleagues. Thank you Supervisor DeGeer for nominating me and Supervisor Yvonne Norelli for seconding the nomination, making this my seventh term serving as Chairman of your board. I could not accomplish any of this or what we have done in the past 12 years without good supervisors, great employees, and support from my family. I would like to thank our staff on the Board Offices for always being here to help. To the county administrator, Mark Simone, we will have some challenging times, but we will get through them as we always do with our team. Thank you to all of our employees for making this county one of the best counties in New York State. It is you that come to work every day, face the public, and make our county so great. First, I would like to welcome our newly-elected supervisors, Matt Roberts from the city of Oneida, words one, two, and three. Welcome, Matt. Joe Ostrander from the city of Oneida, words four, five, six. Welcome, Joe. Jim Cunningham from the town of Nelson. Welcome, Jim. And Thomas TJ Stokes from the town of Smithfield. Welcome. Congratulations on being elected Supervisor to represent the people of your towns and city here in Madison County. You not only are responsible for people who elected you, you are responsible as part of this body for all 70,000 residents of Madison County. I would also like to congratulate all of those who were re-elected this year in the respective towns and the city of Oneida. For those of you who are new, the county is run by those who show up for their committee meetings and take a large interest in committee business. In other words, those who take the responsibility entrusted in them seriously. There will be days when you feel abandoned or lost, and you will ask yourself, "What the hell am I doing here?" And that's okay. That's very natural. As in life, you will have victories and defeats, good times and bad. Remember to keep your focus on moving your towns and the city and the county forward. In today's cynical society and political atmosphere, you will be stretched to the limits at some points. Days will feel like when our famous President Harry S. Truman once said, "If you want a friend in Washington, get a dog." However, 99.9% of the time, this board works together, regardless of party or pettiness, to move us all forward. Dan DeGeer will be ending his career today as Supervisor, but he will be serving the county in another important role as Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Thank you, Dan, for serving our county and your towns selflessly and with hard work and dedication. You certainly will be missed, and we all wish you well in your next endeavor here in Madison County. With that, it is truly an honor to become, with this next term, the third-longest-running Chairman in Madison County history. To become Chairman alone is a humbling experience, one that is not taken lightly. Again, thank you all. I will be giving the State of the County shortly, but first, we are going to ask our Veterans Director, Ron Raymer, and Veterans Counselors Jeremy Ward and Sherry Robinson to come forward and give a presentation on what they do for our veterans here in Madison County. I'm calling 2020, the year of our veteran here in Madison County. Each meeting, we will have a different Veterans Group come in and speak on how they serve our veterans' communities by their respective organizations. As I have always said, it is because of our veterans, this body, this board, and us as individuals is why we are here. Again, thank you for the honor of being your Chairman and leading our county for another two years.
Good afternoon. It's great to be here before you all. My name is Ron Raymer.
The air conditioner's running in the back here.
I'm turning it off. Any better? Is it working?
Here you go.
All right, I'll just elevate it. It's on!
It's working.
It's working. Everybody, hear me a little better?
Oh, no. We're hearing it for years, Chairman.
All right, okay.
It's great to be here before you all start. My name is Ron Raymer, and I am the current Director of the Madison County Veteran Service Agency. Here with me today is my team of dedicated Veterans Counselors. To my left, Sherry Robinson; to my right is Jeremy Ward. Thank you. I know I speak for all of us when I say that as veterans ourselves, it is both an honor and a privilege to be able to work with and assist the veteran community of Madison County.
No one good jokes?
I would like to begin by first thanking the Chairman and the rest of the board for the opportunity today to share with you all some information about our agency and recently-passed Veterans Legislation, federal legislation, which changed VA policy and the positive impact this will have for the thousands of Navy veterans and their survivors nationwide, especially the veterans and their survivors right here in Madison County, who had otherwise been denied essential protections, healthcare, and compensation. Sherry and Jeremy are passing around our flyer, which gives a nice description of all the services and applications and various things that we provide to the veteran community. On June 25th of 2019, President Trump signed into law, Public Law 116-23, commonly referred to as the Blue Water Navy Vietnam Veterans Act of 2019, which went into effect on January 1st of 2020. As many of you are likely aware, our Vietnam veterans were exposed to Agent Orange and other similar herbicides during their service in Vietnam. This toxic exposure led to severe diseases and, in many cases, death. As a result, the VA created a presumptive list of 14 different diseases with a known link to herbicide exposure. However, these presumptive protections were limited to only those service members who were, as the VA referred to them, as boots on ground with service on Vietnamese soil or on the inland waterways of Vietnam. This boots-on-ground requirement led to the exclusion of service members who served onboard ships that operated within the coastal, territorial waters of Vietnam, even though they too were developing these diseases at an equally alarming rate. This exclusion ignored the health hazards that the Agent Orange and other herbicides posed to the service members aboard the ship and denied them essential healthcare and compensation. The naval ships of the time used evacators for the desalination process, whereby they turned seawater into puddle drinking water. Unfortunately, this process was not able to effectively remove the harmful toxins associated with herbicides that ended up in the coastal waters due to the runoff from mainland Vietnam. With the passing of Public Law 116-23, Blue Water Navy veterans are now entitled to a presumption of service connection for illnesses related to Agent Orange exposure. The Blue Water Navy Vietnam Veterans Act of 2019 extended the presumption of herbicide exposure, such as Agent Orange, to veterans who served in the offshore waters of the Republic of Vietnam between January 9th, 1962 and May 7th, 1975. As of January 1st, 2020, veterans who served as far as 12 nautical miles from the shore of Vietnam or were at service during that time period in the Korean Demilitarized Zone are presumed now to have been exposed to herbicides, such as Agent Orange, and may now be entitled to service connection for any of the 14 conditions related to herbicide exposure. These 14 conditions are as follows. This includes amyloidosis, chronic B-cell leukemia, chloroacne, diabetes mellitus type 2, Hodgkin's disease, ischemic heart disease, multiple myeloma, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, Parkinson's disease, peripheral neuropathy, forferia cutania targa, it's a liver dysfunction, prostate cancer, respiratory cancers, as dozens of other cancers, and other soft-tissue sarcomas. We wanted to take this time to share this with the board to make you aware that we at the Veteran Service Agency stand ready, willing, and able to assist your veteran constituents and the veteran community of Madison County with obtaining their recently authorized Agent Orange-related disability claims before the Department of Veterans Affairs. If there are any questions or concerns regarding this new law If there are any questions or concerns regarding this new law or any of the information presented to you today, please contact our office directly. Next up is Jeremy Ward with a brief history of our agency, followed immediately by Sherry Robinson, who will share some of the recent changes made at our agency intended to improve the quality of service provided to our veteran community here in Madison County. Thank you.
My name is Jeremy Ward, and I'm here to give you a little history. Due to the veterans' understanding of the bureaucracy of the Veterans Affairs and the Veterans Affairs hurried schedule, the Veteran Agency service was created. The American Legion saw there was a need for a liaison between veterans and the Veterans Affairs. New York State constitutions stated that there would be an agency to assist a veteran. On August third, nineteen forty-four, Dr. S.S. Reynolds from the town of DeRider was appointed as Madison County Veteran, Veterans Relief Officer as a volunteer. On December twenty-first, Marion Olds of Casanova was appointed by the New York, New York State Adjutant General to the Veterans Relief Commission of Madison County. On January nineteen forty-five, S.S. Reynolds was appointed as County Service Officer, Director of Madison County Veteran Service Agency, but tragically dies soon after. On November twenty-ninth, the branch office in Hamilton National Bank Building where John Figg worked and the New York State Veteran Counselor with Marion Olds as the Service Officer and Director of the Madison County Program. Also Duncan McEntree of Hamilton also was appointed as the Veteran Counselor for Madison December twelfth, Mr. Olds made Director of the County Veteran Service Agency in the Madison County Courthouse. On January seventh, nineteen forty-six, Lester Hendricks of Casanova was appointed to W. Director of Madison County Court, County Agency. Mr. Olds and Lester Hendricks are both World War One vets. Duncan McEntree and John Figg are both World War Two vets at the time. On April sixteenth, nineteen sixty-four, John, or Robert Sigsby became the Director of the Veteran Service Agency of Madison County, staffed with Sigsby, James, Ally as Counselors, and Al Stoker as the typist. On May fifteenth, nineteen seventy-eight, Joe Hammond became the Director of the Madison County Veteran Service Agency. On March seventeenth, nineteen eighty, Al Wagner became the Director of the Madison County Veteran Service Agency. On January second, nineteen ninety-two, Al Stoker became the Director of the Madison County Veteran Service Agency. On February tenth, nineteen ninety-eight, Don Smith became the Director of the Madison County Veteran Service Agency. And Ron Raymer, as of June first, two thousand nineteen, is newly appointed Director of the Madison County Veteran Service Agency after now retired. Thank you very much. Here's Sherry.
Again, my name's Sherry Robinson. I'm one of the Veteran Service Officers in the Veteran Agency. As an office comprised of personnel with military experience, it contributes to our ability to be able to relate to our veteran clients. We have a compassionate and understanding of the problems which confront veterans, widows, widowers, and their children. We will apply specialized knowledge in the best ways suited to the needs of every individual and other beneficiary who comes into the office for assistance. In our office, we strive to ensure that our county's veterans and their dependents are all aware of all federal, state, and local benefits through the VA, which consists of investigating, conducting interviews, and completing applications with veterans and their dependents to obtain a comprehensive case history by gathering and reviewing military and medical records to support their claims. We also assist veterans in obtaining veteran medals, burial benefits, survivor benefits, education, home loans, life insurance, vocational rehab, property tax discounts, military records, and nursing home assistance. We also provide information and support to outside entities that administer to Madison County veterans and surrounding counties. We help every single veteran regardless of their discharge or financial status. We're happy to help. This new team of dedicated service officers has only been together since June, two thousand nineteen, and we are already a cohesive and supportive bond with one goal: help and assist any veteran in any way possible we can. We're actually considered a one-stop shop. That's actually what came out of one of our veterans' mouths. Our office works closely with multiple departments in Madison County: mental health, the county clerk, historian, DMB, DSS, and real property. This is in addition to network with other nonprofit and veteran, or yeah, veteran organizations. Our future plans are already blossoming with new programs such as mobile services. We have been outreach more to veteran-assisted veterans and their next-of-kin by driving to the homes of veterans that can't physically make it to our office. We have been and continue to attend training and meetings to keep it current and up-to-date with issues and events, outreach and outsourcing to different agencies and organizations to help with any difficult, difficulties or burdens that our veterans may have. Our visions are soaring, and we're planning on so many different things that can only make the office and the veterans in Madison County better. So if you have any questions in regards to anything that we have mentioned, due to, due to the lack of time, please visit our office on the first floor of this building. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Resolution number one, resolution of appreciation, board member recognition, Paul Walrod, Vice Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Chairman, I'm, excuse me, I'm honored to move this resolution for adoption.
He's no, you'll have to, excuse him. Resolutions are made, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bono, is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Goldstein.
I would just like to say that when Dan DeGeer came on this board and became the vice-chair, I thought the agency, for all of you, particularly the Southern end of the county, was really dramatically different. I'd give Dan a lot of credit for helping us organize the Southern end of the county to survive and getting a lot of things done as a group, and I think he deserves a lot of credit. So I appreciate it.
Yes, anybody else have any comments? Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to say when I first came on the board, I really didn't know a whole lot about what was going on, and Dan really helped me sort through a lot of things, and I really appreciate that.
Mr. Walrod.
Mr. Chairman, besides the help that Dan has offered, you reached out here as soon as we got here, phone call prior to getting here, you know, any help he could be was, you know, if you remember, we were hit within two months of when I was elected with compressor station issues, and Dan was right there helping with advice and anything we needed. But on a personal level, Dan was always married to my niece, but now, I knew Dan, but that was it. Now I consider Dan a trusted and close friend, and I really appreciate the relationship.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. DeRottica.
Me and Dan had a rough start when we first started here.
To say the least.
He was the vice-chairman, though.
No, he wasn't.
He asked me a lot of questions on how we should run production. I'd give him some advice, and I'm so glad that you took the chair, uh, vice-chairmanship over, because you've done a good job for Dan, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Nurelli.
As I've said before, personally to Dan, but to the entire Board, I have the same sentiment that Supervisor Jones had. I took on this position to better my community, not knowing what it entailed, and thanks to Dan and all the time that he spent with me creating a budget, correcting a lot of things that were done, or not done, and I just wanted to tell you thank you very much for all of your efforts. You'll be missed up here.
Any other discussion? I'll be glad you're getting off the board because I don't want you to listen to that phone buzz also.
Hey, it must be an emergency.
It must be an emergency, yeah.
But it is.
I will certainly miss Dan as, as the Vice Chairman of the Board and certainly as a member of our Board. Dan and I and Mark have forged a very unique relationship, and Dan and I do get along really well and want to continue our friendship, and I appreciate everything that Dan has ever done, done for me as the Chairman and done for our county. As I said, he goes on and above, and he's a, he is the embodiment of a public servant. So, thanks, Dan. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Carry.
Resolution number two, resolution of appreciation, retiree recognition, Dan DeGeer, Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Okay, I don't know whose idea it was to make me talk right after everybody said this. Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Resolution's been made, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Nurelli, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Carry. Okay. Where did I say it from? Dan, no, oh, Highway. He's not here? Somebody forgot my job that's on Highway. Thanks, John.
Um, Dan, I'm sure he would have liked to be here, but unfortunately, he has taken his supplement ill, and I would just ask that everybody say a prayer for Dan. He's, he's having a hard time right now, so I try to appreciate it. Thank you.
Resolution number three, appointing a county attorney, Dan DeGeer, Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Resolution's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Schwartz, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Carry. You're very welcome.
Resolution number four, appointing a clerk to the Board of Supervisors, Dan DeGeer, Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Resolution's been made, do I have a second by Mr. Stepansky, is there any discussion? I would caution on this one. Cindy's been the clerk of this board for thirty-five years.
She started when she was fifteen.
I think she started in seventy-six.
Started in nineteen seventy-six with the county, and that's why I always say that historical perspective is important, and she remembers where most everything is, pulls it out of the files.
She knows all the bodies.
Yeah, and then some. So, Cindy, thank you for everything you do for us, and so. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Carry.
Thank you very much. Resolution number five, designating newspapers for two thousand and twenty, Dan DeGeer, Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Resolution's been made, second by Mr. Moses, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Carry.
Resolution number six, authorize attendance in an out-of-state conference for public health, Dan DeGeer, Chairman, Government Operations Committee.
Mr. Chairman, my very last one, it's appropriate, it's an emergency preparedness grant, thankfully. I move this resolution for adoption.
Resolution's been made, second by Mr. Stepansky, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Carry.
Resolution number seven, appointing a member to the Madison County Board of Health, Alex Stepansky, Chairman, Health and Health Services Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of this resolution.
Resolution's made, second by Mr. Goldstein, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Carry.
Resolution number eight, authorize a chairman to renew a memorandum of lease with the Madison Oneida Board of Cooperative Education Services, OCS, Pete Walrod, Chairman, Criminal Justice Public Safety Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution for adoption.
Resolution's been made, do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Nurelli, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Carry. Hmm? Trying to do the State of the State now? Again, welcome, everyone. Two thousand nineteen was a year of accomplishments. We wrapped up several major projects and laid the groundwork for upcoming and current projects. Our county administrator, Mark Simone, will be giving a much more detailed address going through each department next month, but I would like to go over just a few highlights today from two thousand nineteen and where we go for two thousand twenty. We finalized the purchase of Delphi Falls Park in two thousand nineteen, and with the help of our planning department, secured a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Regional Economic Development Council for park improvements. This past summer, we honored Harold and Barbara Jones with a dedication ceremony. Without their very generous donation of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the people of Madison County, the purchase of Delphi Falls Park would not have been possible. We also completed the year-and-a-half-long renovation of the hundred-and-ten-year-old historic Madison County Courthouse. This eighteen-million-dollar renovation not only modernized the building, but we were able to keep the historical integrity as well. The courthouse is now one-hundred-percent ADA accessible, bringing it up to the standards laid out in the nineteen ninety law signed by President George H.W. Bush. The project included the addition of two elevators, a new wing, modernizing courtrooms, offices, and jury rooms, and two new statues. All of these changes will meet the needs of our legal community for generations to come. The renovations included creating a single point of entry for the courthouse and our county office building. The single point of entry allows for the safety and security of our employees and all who enter. I know it is a bit of an inconvenience, I have heard that, but we prevent one incident, it is well worth it. In the past, we have had people come in looking for department heads and employees with the person's picture on sheets of paper, thus sparking the need for greater security. It is not nineteen sixty-nine anymore when this building was first built. The world is a much different place. In May, we also held our Board of Supervisors meeting in the courthouse, the original place of the board meetings, after the county seat was moved to Wambsville long ago. Board meetings were there until nineteen sixty-nine when the county office building was built. Also, in two thousand nineteen, the emergency management training facility was completed. When the board signed the historic agreement with the New York, with New York State and the Oneidas in two thousand thirteen, the board dedicated part of the eleven-million-dollar settlement to our volunteer firefighters and EMS personnel. The board had a vision to see that the county volunteers, which are, which we are seeing fewer and fewer of, have a facility close by for training. Now that vision has become a reality with the completed training center that houses the state-of-the-art classroom and a modern fire training facility. In Madison County, collaborative efforts and economic development will always continue to be on the front burner. For example, the completion of Phase One and the beginning of Phase Two of Empire Farm's greenhouse project in the city of Oneida has already brought in over one-hundred jobs and over one-hundred million dollars in investment to our community. This is a great accomplishment for our IDA and the city of Oneida, as well as our county. Another collaborative effort is the Reimagine the Canals Project. It is another great score for Madison County, as well as the village of Canistota and the town of Lennox. We also partnered with the village of Wambsville through ma, former Mayor John Klute to complete the community park located in front of the DSS building that serves as a park for both the village and our social services department. Our efforts to bring water to the town of Lincoln and Lennox by way of the landfill is finally coming to fruition. Over one-hundred-and-fifty residents will be getting water this year because of the county's investment in these communities. We understood early on that the landfill being sited in Lincoln was not a popular decision. However, over the course of the past twelve years that I have been Chairman, we have sought to offset those decisions by investing in Lincoln, first by creating a town-host community benefit of over fifty-thousand dollars a year, when in two thousand six, that host community benefit was nonexistent. Now we have invested over four million dollars of state grant monies and county funds to give Lincoln a good footing for future public water projects. By helping Lincoln and all of our communities with investments, grants, as well as county technical help, it helps all of us grow and become a better county. We have set an example here in Madison County. We set aside our differences and come together for the common good, living in the past and harboring ill will- Living in the past and harboring ill will or negative feelings does not do our communities any good. We must look to the future. As I said in my first state of the county 12 years ago, if you don't like change, stay home, hide under the bed, or move. This board has been able to adapt and change with the times, all for the better. A fact that I am very proud of and the Board of Supervisors should be very proud of as well. The town of Georgetown is a great example of collaboration between the town and county. A few years ago, the county invested in a health study for the citizens of Georgetown, looking at the air quality before and after the construction of the natural gas compressor station. The compressor station was a big win for Georgetown, adding over 30% to their assessment rates and allowing them to invest in their future. This came to fruition with help from the county as well as some relationship building. Also, the county assisted the town in landing a $400,000 grant to help with them taking over an abandoned school for their new highway garage and their town offices. Again, this was accomplished by the town and county working together. In 2019, we laid the groundwork for construction of the new county highway garage in the town of Eaton. This project involves replacing a 75-year-old building that was in desperate need of repair. In 2020, we will see the groundbreaking in construction of the state-of-the-art facility. Our collaboration with Onondaga County and the town of Sullivan to bring water to clear path for veterans will continue in 2020. The investment in public water to clear path will bring a new and greater investment to that facility. As Sullivan continues to grow, this gives our county an economic engine to help surrounding communities grow and expand as well. This year, the county looks forward to applying for a $10 million grant through the US, through USDA to improve broadband infrastructure in Madison County. In 2019, the county hired ECC to do a study of where we need to improve the infrastructure for broadband. We now have a handle on it and are applying for the grant. This will help our small businesses in the southern part of the county as well as many members of our agriculture community and have a need, that have a need for high-speed internet. By doing this, we will improve the quality of life of our residents and make Madison County more appealing to business. Collaborative relationships between governments and organizations and people all contribute to our success as a county. This coming year, I look forward to working closely with the Central New York Regional Planning and Development with David Botar, the Director of that organization. I admire Dave for his creative and out-of-the-box thinking, which is exactly what this county has done for the past 12 years and what can you continue to do. David has had some great ideas to complement the high investment made by the state and Green Empire Farms for the city of Oneida as well as other communities throughout our county. Speaking of the city of Oneida, in 2020, I look forward to working with the new mayor, Helen Acker. Helen, where are you? Stand up, new mayor from the city of Oneida. To bring more economic development to the city as well as bring the city back to its former greatness. The new mayor is bringing a fresh attitude of collaboration with our county and she has an understanding that we are all in the same boat, working toward the same goal, a great county and great communities. Things we are currently working on are more businesses, sewers to the county complex, and possibly to the Village of Wambsville. In 2020, we will continue to work and collaborate with our neighbors and community members. Our relationship with the Oneida Nation has come a long way since 2014 and I look forward to continue to vanquishing the naysayers and negative attitudes that have brought years of strife and lawsuits to an end. We have a great working relationship with the Oneidas and we look forward to continuing that relationship long into the future. Also in 2020, we will again lobby New York State for our host community monies for the Yellow Brick Road and Point Place Casinos. It is just a matter of fairness. The success of Madison County is also due to the dedication and hard work of other elected officials. A few highlights from 2019 include our county clerk's office headed by Mike Kevell. He has transformed, he has transformed the department greatly over the past few years. Revenues are up 11% over 2018 with the ability to do electronic payments, selling of EZ passes, selling of maps, and new this year, the selling of advertisement on the big screen at the DMV. It is the ability of our county clerk and his employees to be able to think outside of the box that has made Madison County DMVs one of the best, if not the best, in New York State. The clerk is also selected by his peers to serve as Treasurer of New York State Association of County Clerks and since has also pointed out problems with the New York State Green Light Law, once again, our state legislature passed legislation without thinking it through. Our sheriff's office, run by Sheriff Todd Hood, has also seen great changes and transformations in 2019. The Sheriff's Office Criminal Division earned accreditation from New York State in 2019. Another big change for all, for all of our schools in Madison County in 2019 was the addition of our school resource officers. The Board of Supervisors allocates half of the salary of those officers from the host community monies to assist in placing an officer in every school. This program is one of the best community programs we have ever done and has paid big dividends throughout the school year. A partnership with the school districts, the Sheriff's Office, and Madison County is a combination that sets the standards for others to follow. Also, in early spring, the Sheriff's Office joined the Oneida County with their drug task force, working collaboratively to rid our streets of these dangerous substances. Also, in 2019, the county sheriff's office signed a deputization agreement along with the Board of Supervisors with the Oneida Nation. Our district attorney's office has been through a very large transformation under the direction of District Attorney Bill Gaber. First, it was central arraignment. It has taken over a year to come up with a plan and then submit it to the state. We aim to see this implemented in 2020. Thank you to those who have worked countless hours to develop this plan and get it to this point. And now on to another challenge brought to you by Albany, bail reform. The Friday before Christmas, 17 people were let out of jail for various offenses from drugs to known gang members from New York City. All whom, under the legislation, our judges had no choice but to let them out. Across our state, there has been protests from law enforcement as well as the district attorney's offices to repeal or hold this law until our lawmakers fully understand the implications of what this meant. However, as always, our law enforcement, judges, and district attorney will work together within the law to make sure that our residents are safe as they can be. Our county treasurer, Cindy Edick, and her office has done a great job this year in getting our taxes out on time and where they need to be. We continuously remain below the tax cap. Thank you Cindy, despite the increases due to state mandates. Cindy and the county administrator and the departments work hard to keep the county under the cap, allowing us to keep receiving the $800,000 in aid for Raise the Age. With new faces around the horseshoe and the stepping down of Vice Chairman Dan DeGeer, 2020 begins a new chapter for the board. I will be choosing Cliff Moses of Eaton to step in and become the new Vice Chairman. Now, when I asked Cliff this, he wanted everybody to applaud, so I guess we're gonna have it. Supervisor Moses has the board's respect and I will rely heavily on his guidance and others throughout the next two years. Your committee assignments have been put together with the best knowledge of how you as supervisors fit best with the skill sets you possess. The next two years will not only be the best for Madison County, they will be unprecedented and historic. In 2020, three of nine committees are going to be chaired by women supervisors of our board. Supervisor Mary Kavanaugh of Oneida will head the largest and most active committee, Government Operations. It is Supervisor Kavanaugh's demeanor, her leadership, and ability to listen that I have the respect and confidence in putting her into that role. Second, Supervisor Yvonne Norelli of Lincoln will chair the Finance Ways and Means Committee here in Madison County. It is with Supervisor Norelli's leadership ability that I not only I, but others have suggested she would be a good fit for the Chair of Finance. Succeeding Supervisor John Reinhardt, who retired this past year. Third, Supervisor Evan Schwartz of Hamilton will be staying on as Chair of the Public Utility Service Committee. It is certainly not our ability to communicate together, but her leadership and ability to wrangle and see the broadband project through that will help our county economically. I believe that Supervisor Schwartz will position that committee so that the board's initiatives will realize such as the $10 million broadband grant. The other six committee chairs are not any less important, thought of differently, or thought of differently. It is also your ability to lead and reflect the way the Chair and Madison County should move forward, which is why you have been chosen to chair, be chairs of these committees. In closing, let me make, let's make 2020 better than ever, keeping Madison County on the cutting edge. A lot of our colleagues throughout the state look to Madison County for advice in the way we do things. Not too bad for a rural county in upstate New York. And to our residents, look around, we live in a great county with much to offer. To our employees, keep up the good work in making our government and Madison County the best in New York State, and thank you all.
Okay, so we're done? What? Swearing Cliff, yeah, we gotta swear at Cliff or swearing Cliff?
I think we want to swear at.
Well, do you want, you want, yeah, swearing Cliff and then we got, we got a little something for Dan. Oh, it's all the Moseses, back up! Cliff, this isn't a good sign already.
I'll put the correct hand down. I swear for Moses. I swear for Moses, sound and swear, you sound and swear. I support the Constitution of the United States. I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New York.
What are these called? PAWS?
Of the office. Of the office. Of Vice Chairman of the Madison County Board of Supervisors. Vice Chairman of the Madison County Supervisors. To the best of my abilities, I apologize. To the best of my abilities, I apologize. Congratulations. Thank you.
You want us to go first?
I'll start as the assistant.
Okay, yeah.
So before Dan asks for any staff, initial staff of the Department of Urban Management, we got an assistant.
No, 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 no.
This is Marshall, his new assistant. Can I actually return on so we can hear? Cause he likes Spanish.
Is he gonna work?
Here's Marshall.
I'm here!
And he might commission for Dan, I'll say.
I'm ready for a road question. Oh, no! I'm ready for a race. Go, go, go!
Lights and siren the whole way.
And he speaks Spanish.
And he speaks Spanish too, so you don't even, you're not gonna even interpret.
Dan and I have had many, 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 many talks about lights and sirens and he's never seen a light and siren he didn't like and he'd give me a derogatory comment afterwards and everything, but Cindy, Cindy, I was talking to Cindy, we wanted to get him something appropriate, like a hat with a red light on top with a siren and stuff, and Cindy said the PAWS Patrol and I didn't know who they were. Huh? Yeah, that's good. And yesterday, last night, Dan came up upstairs here and he had his little lunchbox with him and it's something else, so we got him a new lunchbox, an appropriate lunchbox. We got you the PAWS Patrol lunchbox and a new thermos, so.
And you're all gonna love this cake.
Yeah. Yes, we have lots of cake, so everybody stay for cake. We just need a motion to adjourn, so Mr. Roberts, would you like to make that motion? Mr. Roberts made the motion, seconded by Ms. Kavanaugh. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by voting aye.
Aye.